Lord, help us to be mindful of the people we are representing. Let us always remember what your intention is for us. Heavenly Father, just fill our hearts today with your desires. Let us always remember compromised wins and help us remember those that can't take care of themselves. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Glad to receive you to the Senate, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to roll call. Marquise, you see all council members present, except for councilman Dodd. Any takes for public comment? We had no signups this morning. Move on to second reading, item one, proposed FY26 budget ordinance. Nathan?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You guys should have received Friday, the last iteration of this document. Councilwoman Busme is asking me this morning, have any of the FY26 numbers changed? They have not. This budget that you have includes the amendment that you made at your first reading, which restored the original capital request. The only change in the document that I hope you have before you is some of the FY25 estimates have changed. And that's basically it.
Any questions from council?
Yes. I have concerns. I voted against it last time, but I have concern that we're, what we passed earlier this month will leave us with a $14.7 million fund balance. We noticed at the end of this fiscal year, we went from 21 million down to 18 million almost overnight. And so if that happens again, and we have another, say, 3 million that goes down to where another 3 million, the fund balance just disappears, that would leave us at $11 million, and we just borrowed 26 million. I'm concerned about that amount of money being spent, no new income coming in, other than property taxes and fees, no other taxes. And I would like to see us cut a million and a half out of this budget.
Would you like for me to speak to that?
I would love for you to speak to that.
First of all, there are, members of the Budget Committee are aware of this, we are instituting some new controls in the way that we are handling requisitions and purchase orders, which will tighten up even more than was already tight, the spending controls that are on the city. The other thing that, given the situation that this budget presents, one of the things that I would like to make very clear to you as you go through this coming budget year is when you are increasing your draw on fund balance. Okay? Right now, you should see that on budget amendments, when you see them, it should say fund balance right there. We will make a point of pointing that out to you. That's the second thing. The third thing is, this budget calls for, you know, right at about 3.7 million dollars in the draw on fund balance. I know that you guys, or at least I hope you guys, I think the plan is for the council to have some ongoing discussions in the coming months about some of the priorities that you have. I think it's possible that you can probably make some decisions as you go through that process that will help even this year's budget. That is my hope.
Explain that part.
I mean, I think Mayor Conger is hoping to have some planning, budgeting, and some discussions in the coming months, right there. And those are things, at the time that you can make some of those decisions and say, yeah, this is less of a priority to us. We wanted to get a budget passed, but we know that this can wait. The other thing that's going on is there's, you know, they're doing the long-range capital planning submissions right now, as we are, as we are having this meeting, I'm sure we're getting things. And Councilman Lawrence asked me a couple of weeks ago, he said, is somebody going to be watching capital spending? I said, yes, sir. I said, there are several people going to be watching capital spending this year. I say that not to say that this is going to be perfectly fine, because as you know, this bothers me.
Could we pass a continuing budget and then go through the capital, what we're planning on doing in the next few months, so that we don't approve, once again, a larger budget that we have to clean up afterwards, or we don't have to clean up afterwards and we end up spending $3.6 million that hits the fund balance?
With respect, Councilman McMain, the mayor's proposal at the last time where he removed capital was essentially a continuing budget. That allowed you to go back through and have the time, as you look at these things in the next couple of months, to add back the things that you wanted to do. I believe that, I don't, he and I didn't talk about that, but I think that was essentially what you were pitching at that time. That was the proposal you had before you when you amended this budget here. Now, you can do it either way. You could say, yes, we're going to take this out, and then we're going to add back and adjust. You could do that. That was what you had the chance to do at the first reading. At this point, you have a chance to pass this budget and then back things out over the next couple of months, if you want to.
Have we ever backed anything out of a budget?
Well, I mean, I don't know. Have you? No, the, I don't remember. I mean, it's, there are certainly years, even this year, that you budgeted funds that you did not spend. You spent those funds on other things, but...
See, that's what happens.
Yeah. But, you know, I mean, this, the oversight part of this thing begins in our office, runs through the mayor's office, and ends up on your desk, right there. And so ultimately, you've got a chance to make these decisions now or in the future.
And this is, with all respect to the mayor and you, I just get a little nervous.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
I hear the questions.
On this, at the last meeting, I think we said we had $2.5 million that was going to hit fund balance for some contracts, to take that 14.5 up to 17.
We are expecting a reimbursement for a couple of different projects.
TDEC grant.
Yeah, TDEC and some road funding and some other things. Still, I mean, 17 is not a great number, it's better than 14.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Are we saying now we're still positive we're going to get that money?
We are going to get that money.
That is not, maybe 99%, that's 100%.
No, they have filed for the reimbursements, and we are waiting now to receive the money.
And it's about 2.5, wasn't it?
It's 2.2 to, actually, there may be up to 3.6, but I know it's 2.2.
So can we say we want that to go to fund balance and stay there and not use that money this year?
You can make a decision to do that, but then when you pass a budget amendment that hits fund balance, that's what, it's a draw from fund balance. There's very little that you can do to bind yourself in the future. I mean, you can say, I'm going to do this, and then too much later, you can change your mind. And you can change your mind $100,000 at a time.
I'm not comfortable.
What did you just say about the, that $3 million? We can put that, we can apply that to the fund balance once received? Did you say that?
I mean, it will hit the fund balance. When we receive it, it will go to fund balance, unless you guys budget it differently. You'll do a budget amendment. When we receive that money, you'll see a revenue, and then you'll get a chance to assign it somewhere. You can assign it to fund balance. But the fact is, if you want to buy, you know, a pallet full of widgets, and there's not money in the budget for it, you can take that from fund balance, and that'll be taking the money back out that you just put in.
Yeah. Then all we can say, we're just not going to buy the widgets.
Yeah, yes, sir. That's the choice you've got.
Yeah, okay, well, I like that choice.
Well, yeah. Me, too.
Councilman Lawrence?
Well, the financial portal.
Yeah.
The great tool.
Yeah.
How accurate is that? Has that got a lag in it? And the reason I ask, it shows the general fund underspending budget by about 7 to 8 million. And we know that's not true. I think we know it's not true.
I haven't looked at it today. Normally, it lags a week.
Today, it's 99 budget, 91 spent, 8 million under budget.
Okay, there are, I mean, I'd have to look at it, Councilman Lawrence. There are expenses that we have journaled, that show up on some of the reports that we get, that have not actually posted, that do not show up on the online, on the online portal yet.
Is there a possibility it could be 3 or 4 million here that we are going to be under?
No, sir. I think you're going to be about $430,000 over this year.
Okay, you don't have that portal information, so you couldn't tell me what the differences are.
I don't, I mean, I don't have it with me. I do have the budget document that we've got before us that shows a change in fund balance of $430,000.
I noticed that, and like I said, went to the portal right now, and it shows 7, 8 million.
Well, I mean, there are outgoing, there are outstanding purchase orders and things for this year that, I mean, you know.
There's a, in this, it also shows that the police salaries are $700,000 over. Should we not have had a budget amendment on those?
We should.
Any other questions?
Well, back on tomorrow, or to, so, we could pass, we could make amendment today, and pass it saying we are going to cut 1.5 million out of the budget and let the mayor and the Budget Committee come back with recommendations, that would, we could do that today.
There are a couple of options. I mean, if you just said, take 1.5 million out of this...
Out of increases, not cut anything, just out of increases.
Right. I mean, you could do that. It would, it would be cleaner and easier if we understood your intention.
Yeah, I think if you would say, take out of capital, then we'd have to assign which items in the capital would not be funded, kind of like we did last time with one of the amendments, I can't remember who made that originally, maybe it was Councilmember Wallace, said, want to fund first responders' capital, and then, it was, okay, it was Councilmember Holt. So you'd have to be specific to what the capital items would be.
I would think doing that would be a dereliction of our duty. This is not the mayor's budget, it is the council's budget to pass. And so if we send back to the mayor 1.5 million to cut, we are not doing our duty as a council. It's our budget.
I have question, comments. We're talking about the 3.7 million we had originally said, or the last thing we had left it to take from fund balance. And if I understand Mr. McMain, he's saying to cut it 1.5 million to pass the budget today, but then we're going to come back in August or so and look at these and then put back in and take out? That's where I'm concerned about. I'd rather have a clean budget, know what we're doing, without so much moving and amendments. I know we're going to have some, but I would like to do it as clean as possible, so they know what they have and...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to remind council that there really is no such thing as what we're referring to as a clean, straightforward budget. Just about every single month, there are several amendments that we have to process, and that is altering the budget that we essentially start with. So I understand the desire to make things all neat and tidy, however, given the nature of the budget and how it is a living, changing document, that is essentially impossible.
Sure, but I don't want to say I'm going to cut it 100, 1.5 million, and then turn around and say, well, please, you've got four or five months to, you know, figure this out, and then make amendments. I would rather it be, I won't use the word clean, but I think we need to know what we're putting in the budget.
Well, I'd like to remind council again that the second item that we're voting on today is a budget amendment due to an unforeseen situation. JPD does not plan to have accidents, however, by nature of the job, these things happen. And when they do happen, we have to amend the budget to accept the insurance recovery money to deploy it. So just again, making the point that there's no way to have a clean, straightforward budget. It's going to bend, it's going to shape, it's going to do different things. So I challenge council to be aware of what you're voting on each month, because these amendments that we pass, they do have real implications as to how the numbers wind up at the end of each year.
Yeah, I hope insurance is still recovery and equals...
On the insurance part, the vehicle was taken out because of a wreck. Insurance, we bring it back in.
That's right.
Should be neutral.
Agreed.
What ends up happening is that along the way, we spend more money than we budget, and that's where I assume we, along the way, spend $3 million more than we budget. And, you know, that's a lot of money a month.
Well, if we receive $50,000 from insurance, and it takes $65,000 total to purchase and then outfit a new vehicle, you know, it's, you want to replenish that vehicle. We don't want to take steps back in terms of our capital and supplies we provide our first responders.
True, but then we're talking about 3 million, not 15.
I don't think we can just say, I, I don't really hear a plan, you know, and that's where I'm at when we come to vote. You know, I offered a plan last month, and of course, it was voted down, which is, that's fine. So we come back today to pull the money from our emergency fund, and now we're up in the air of what we're going to do. We say pull one, you know, cut 1.5 million, but there's no plan there as to what are we going to cut 1.5 million where? Where are we going to cut it? I can't just vote on cutting 1.5 million without a plan.
Well, my plan last, the last time we met, was to take the mayor's May 30 budget, where he removed capital, put about 100, 1.5 million back in and pass that one.
Councilman Lawrence?
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the budget to what Councilman McMain just said, go back to that original budget, and add 1.5 million in capital.
I think what you have to do, you've got to make a motion on what's on the agenda, and then motion to amend that. So it has to be a motion and a second on what's on the agenda, then we can go start our amendments.
Yeah, we have not yet motioned the...
Right.
The original item.
Not, not, so we skip.
Mr. Chairman, I would also ask, would, if we go back on this today, we would have to have, are we able to get a second reading in by July 1?
Now, you can amend the budget, this is on second reading, so you can amend the budget, and it doesn't require an additional reading.
This is it.
This would be, yeah. So if we want to go down the amendments, then we would need a motion and a second on the proposed budget ordinance, it's in your packet today.
Could we just have a continuance of the budget, and we just amend it, once we submit it to the state, I think we did this past year, no? And then we amend it in August or...
Any changes to the document presented would first have to have a motion and a second on it, then you can make a motion to make the amendments.
So...
Somebody moved it, because I was about to move it.
No, I hadn't yet.
Did somebody move it? I saw move, I moved that we adopt the FY26 budget ordinance.
As presented, right?
Yes, as presented.
That's the only thing we can do.
Only thing you can do right now, you've got a second on, is there a second?
I second it.
Our motion is second now, we can talk about amendments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose the amendment that I mentioned, Mr. McMain's proposal to go back to the, what date was that budget?
May 30.
May 30 budget, which is clean in capital, take that as our base, and add 1.5 in capital. Is that what you were...
And that puts us, we're taking money out of the fund balance, but not 3.6 million.
Right, right. We're still cutting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to get the amendment. So you'd have to, if you're taking the money, if you're taking out of capital, because we have the projects that are funded in capital, you'd have to...
Okay, let me, capital, our general fund, with the exception of not touching public safety or public works, or those two.
I have a question right there, then. Is it okay?
Yes, yes, go ahead. Well, no, because it's done in motion.
Okay, we've got to have a second.
You have a second, yeah. I'm trying to write that down, too, okay.
And I got lost on that last part.
1.5.
Okay, hold on just one second. We're good. He needs a second, and then we can have discussion and...
Capital, to fund, to fund public safety.
General fund, no public safety or public works.
Okay. Well, we can't do it or, it'd just be a clear motion on...
Don't all lobby to change the sunshine law, this won't be so messy.
Except for...
Can't cry. If we put in the 1.5, same, you put in, you want a basic operating budget, right, and then 1.5, because we have to make the determination on what we're going to do capital or operating.
That'll be up to you and the Budget Committee to come back with recommendation, give you more flexibility.
I don't know.
Nathan, while they're doing that, would you calculate and give us a firm answer on what the police and fire have in that total, please? Sorry to ask you, you already have. I know, I was going to bring my business.
Public safety has $939,471 in the capital budget.
Both?
Yeah, public safety, yes, ma'am. 939, 471.
And then, just for me, while they were talking, can you add the total cost of the civic center in, please?
245.
I thought it was a little more.
More than that.
Yeah, I think it was more, more like 5 or something.
If you guys are looking for the individual costs for public safety and public works, that's on packet page 5 of the most recent budget document. So Civic Center and Public Safety total is 1.404 million.
Yeah.
And not to put words in your mouth, Councilman Lawrence, but would that be your motion to put 1.4 for Public Safety and the Civic Center, to fund that from capital, and so we reduce the rest of that and bring it down to 1.4 as opposed to 3.7?
Well, the 1.4, that doesn't include the grant-funded stuff as well, Mayor.
Right, right. Right, yeah, in addition to the grant-funded items.
So how much would that be reducing from the current budget?
If we reduce in...
3.7 minus 14.02.
What was that?
I'm trying, I'm doing the math in my head.
3.7 minus 14.02.
We're still approximately, with that idea, we're still approximately 2.3 billion short. For all the things that we talked about, we wanted to keep, and we didn't want to cut anything from the budget, we last convened to discuss this.
So are we in discussion now?
Oh, we've got to, we're trying to figure out what the motion is.
Okay, we amended to what Councilman Wallace said, which would take it out of capital, and we're basically going to be taking...
So reduce the 2.3 million to 1.5 in addition to what we have grant-funded.
Right.
Adding 1.5 for Public Safety and the Civic Center.
Okay, so that's basically taking how much out of that budget?
2.3.
Okay, so...
Yes, that would be my amendment then.
Including the grant-funded stuff?
Yes.
You're looking at capital budget of 1.827. Excuse me, a fund balance, a draw on fund balance of 1.827.
Instead of the 3.
Instead of 3.7, yes, sir.
So funding the grant-funded items, Public Safety and Civic Center, and removing the rest of the capital items. Get the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody understand what the motion is?
Oh, you need to restate.
Can we get a clean amendment, please?
Yeah, so the motion is to remove, to only, in addition to the grant-funded items, to fund out of the fund balance, Public Safety and the Civic Center, which would reduce the overall total funding by roughly 2.3 million dollars.
Which would reduce the overall what?
Overall funding for capital by 2.3 million dollars, taking everything else out of capital that's not Public Safety, not grant-funded, and not Civic Center.
All right.
So that's the motion.
And just to be clear on this motion, that would be eliminating the vast IT needs that we discussed at last meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So to remind everyone...
Let me ask for a second, first. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second. Okay, now we can discuss that.
So to remind everyone, a big part of Public Safety that wouldn't be funded by eliminating IT is the upgrades to windows that will, if not done, will render emergency responders' computers, well, they'll have wide-open security gaps that will create tremendous exposure. So I think it's, I think it's a bad idea to leave out the IT, because you can fund emergency services, but if you don't fund the IT, you're leaving a big hole in what they need.
We'll have meetings monthly, or hopefully, at least monthly, and we could buy a budget amendment, put the IT back in. It'll give us time to analyze the whole department and not piecemeal it.
Well, we're going to be doing that throughout the year anyways, that's the nature of the budget that we work on.
So if we're going to be doing that already, then why don't we go ahead and pass it?
Pass what?
The second of the amendment that Larry just did.
And why don't we just pass the budget, period? And then amend it, just like we're going to, because we're doing the same thing.
I'm well aware that we take things out of the budget.
We have a call for questions, and so we're going to vote on the call for questions. Yes means stop discussion, no means continue discussion. Council, please vote.
Four yes and three no, everyone abstained.
Okay, all right.
I abstained, I didn't mean to, I pushed it down. I thought I got...
So that's four and four?
One.
All right, so motion fails. So we can continue discussion.
I have a question for Tom. Tom, if I don't, if I remember correctly, in your portion of the budget, I thought we included the computers for the cars.
They're talking about the IT.
This is something different, this is IT.
This is IT for the whole...
If the car computers, in the car when we buy a new vehicle, will come in.
There's Brian, if you have any questions.
However, the computers that are currently in use, that would not receive those upgrades, would then have a security risk.
Yes, there are several of them that need upgrades.
Question?
And that's not just in emergency services, that's...
Councilmember Wallace?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding, council, when we left it, we wanted to fund all of the needs. Now we're talking about taking approximately, maybe putting 2.3 or 1.9, or funding the 1.4, excuse me. But there was a lot of apprehension about the fund balance. When we left, I felt like several council members were almost upset because where we were leaving our fund balance. So I want to try to read, since we can't discuss because of the sunshine laws, are we trying to make sure our fund balance is adequate, then go back and put this back in like we do with amendments? Or are we wanting to just go ahead and say, let's fund everything, the 3.7 comes out of fund balance, if we're better during the year, then we're better during the year? I just want some clarification on council members' thoughts.
I believe our vote on this amendment would determine that, essentially.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All right, so council, voting on the amendment. Council, please vote.
Motion failed.
All right, so we're back to the original proposed budget ordinance. Discussion, continued discussion on that.
Call for the question.
All right. You've got a call for questions?
Well, I withdraw it if somebody, nobody said anything. So I withdraw if you've got something to say.
Once again, we've been around the world for a little bit, so what are we voting on now?
Voting on the, the budget is proposed in your packet this morning, that was voted on and approved at the last council meeting.
I would just encourage council to take two approaches. A, we have a revenue issue that continues, we don't have a plan to fund the city's budget into the future. We do need to take a look at any and all revenue options. In addition to that, we need to work on everything we can to reduce expenses. It's a two-pronged approach, and I give council the challenge of stepping up and taking on that, you know, taking on those two approaches. It's on us, this is our budget, as Councilmember Stovall said, we need to do work and stop taking so many trips around the sun with these votes.
All right. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion, motion pass 5 to 3.
All right. Item 2, proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery and appropriate $50,000 for the purchase of a police patrol vehicle.
So, babe.
No, second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass 8 to 0.
No further business coming before the council, meeting is adjourned. No further business coming before the council. Meeting is adjourned.